I want to appreciate everyone for attending. This is the first meeting of the 2020 calendar year. Before we go to the agenda, first of all, I want to ask everyone to turn off your cellphones. If you need to carry on a conversation above a whisper level, please take it outside the hallway. We have a list if you wish to address the council at the end of the meeting. Please come up to the podium and put your name on the list and we'll call you a due course. And before we get going, I certainly want to welcome Michael Silverman, our new city manager, our new permanent city manager. Michael, you've been on a whirlwind tour, it seems like, for the last three weeks. Everyone is singing your praises and certainly hope the honeymoon lasts.
I hope so too, Captain.
Thank you and welcome. We'll now have our invocation by Councilman Willie Jones and our pledge of allegiance by Scott.
Let us pray our heavenly Father, our Lord, our God, that grace created the heavens and the earth. We've come again on this new year and the only year that you have blessed us for a new decade. We still need your guidance and your direction. We pray for our city government, our state, and our nation. We pray, God, with the guidance that we make everything for the citizens of the state and the United States. We come tonight to thank you for our new addition, Mr. Silverman. We pray his guidance, your guidance upon him. In his hour prayer, we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
Does any member of the council have an amendment to the agenda? Okay, I, hearing none, I have seven items. I'm sorry. Yes, okay. First is, I'd like to remove item 6G from the consent agenda and move that to 7A, since I would need to refuse myself on that. I would like to add as item 10E1 under my items, under Ward 3, regarding State of the City Address. There is the matter that is listed as item... Let me get to it here. As...I'm sorry. I'd like to add an amendment to the agenda in executive session for expansion of business. And... I wanted to find the item number on here and I can't. Everyone, please bear with me for one second. There was an item on my agenda. I'm sorry, item 10A, I think, was erroneously placed on the open agenda and should go to executive session as a personnel issue. Does any member of the staff have a proposed amendment to the agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to amend or approve the agenda as amended? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Is there any member of the mayor's youth council here in attendance? All right. I guess the school year started today. Maybe they're already at home doing their homework. One can only hope. All right. Business spotlight tonight is one of my favorite new businesses in Pasadena, Nelson Outdoors. If we have some video.
Here on Mississippi Coast, there are two major seasons, hunting and fishing. Nelson Outdoors is located on Market Street in Pasagoula. They have everything you need to get you and your friends or family ready for your favorite outdoor season. Nelson Outdoors is a family-owned and operated business with over 3,000 square feet of inventory of the biggest and best brands of hunting, fishing, kayaking, and other outdoor activities. Owners and brothers, David and Mike Nelson, have a passion for the outdoors and sought and need for a sporty goods store in Pasagoula. They opened Nelson Outdoors in 2017 and plan to continue growing their customer base and inventory here in our community. At Nelson Outdoors, customers can find top-of-the-line fishing and hunting supplies, gear, and apparel from brands like Drake, Slater, Salt Life, and more. Stop by and see what Nelson Outdoors has to offer for your next trip on the boat or to the shore. Follow them on Facebook or visit their website at www.melsonoutdoors.com for the latest information.
And if you have not, if you are a hunter or any kind of sportsman and you have not been to Nelson Outdoors, you've missed something real spectacular. Please, if that is one of your hobbies or enthusiasms, please feel free to stop in and at least see what they have. There's some great people there and they sure would appreciate the business. All right. Moving on now to the consent agenda. Other than the item that was previously removed, 6G, is there any member of the council who has a question for the staff regarding an item on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? I'll step out now if you would, Councilman Culver, when it comes to the item that was moved to 7A and that's the resolution back in line with the plan.
Need a motion to verify the resolution, Brian.
Certainly.
Certainly.
Oh, if I was saying aye?
Okay. Moving now to item 8A. Michael, you're on.
Yes, sir. Mayor Dane Maxwell submitted his resignation on January 2nd. He was sworn in as the Public Service Commissioner and a letter has been provided to all of the councils stating that fact. At this point in time, given that he submitted his resignation, we will need to move forward on appointing an acting mayor at this time. And that would be Stephen Burrow, to be certain, because we will have to address that in this part of the agenda item.
Okay. So to stick with item 8A, it is merely a formality of their motion to accept the letter of Dane Maxwell resigning as mayor of Pasagoula.
Certainly.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The next item, 8B, is, as Michael, you referenced, the resolution calling for a special election. I certainly would defer to Michael Moore, our interim city attorney, to fill in the details, but as my understanding is, we are required by statute to declare the vacancy within 10 days and we have done so effectively, and to call a special election at some point within the next 45 days. Do I have those numbers basically correct?
That is correct. And we provided the resolution to the Secretary of State, who agreed that we dotted all our i's and crossed t's on the dates in that resolution.
The only thing that I felt needed to be addressed in the resolution was setting an actual date for the election. The date that I figured was February 11th. That's my suggestion, purely simply because that falls, it's on a Tuesday. It falls between our two February meetings. The last time that we had to have a special election, Felix, when you were on the council, I know it was a busy night for Karen and the other people at City Hall trying to have both a meeting and a special election at the same time. So certainly to not increase the burden for any of our employees, that's my suggestion. If anyone else has an alternate suggestion, I'm all ears. All right. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution calling for a special election to fill the unexpired term of Mayor Maxwell with an election date of February 11th?
Seven.
Seven.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item 8C, Michael, if you want to address the issue with the Election Commission.
Yes, sir. As part of this special election process, we will need to work with the Jackson County Election Commission. You have been provided a proposal which states that they will be providing services to the city of Pasagoula to not exceed an amount of $2,000.
And would this be to provide machines?
Yes.
Because we said papered out, didn't last long, but it was one board. Okay. All right. Does any member of the council have any question for Mr. Silverman about the contract or the proposal? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the proposal for the mayoral election from the Jackson County Election Commission? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. And then the last resolution, Michael.
Yes, sir. It's also tied into the special election. We currently pay our poll workers $75 and in working with our clerk, Aaron Kennedy, it's been brought to my attention that we will probably need to start paying them $125 to ensure that we have enough poll workers to oversee this election.
And Karen, if you don't mind, just out of curiosity, is there a requirement for the number of poll workers? Is it just sort of based on demand? How is that figured?
There is a certain requirement for each polling place up to three to four. For some work, there's a, will serve as a main one and the others, so it's like four at each place.
Okay. And will that be the same polling places we normally have for the next poll election?
All right. If there are no further questions, is there a motion to authorize payment for the poll workers for the mayoral special election? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Item 8E, modular home designs.
Yes, sir. This is more of a discussion item design. It was brought to my attention that there have been some concerns about construction modular homes in different areas of the city. In particular, the concern has been the actual design of each module and building, some that don't seem to meet the character of the neighborhoods that they're being constructed in. I know that Donovan has a little more information about the building structures and Kathy provided you any information if you have any questions about modular home designs and how they're regulated within the city of Pasagoula.
Does any member of the council want to hear from Mr. Scruggs or any further issue about the modular homes?
I'd like to hear Donovan get up and give us some insight on what we are currently doing as part of the regulation. I mean, is there some standard has to be made either?
Yeah, my experience with modular homes basically began around 2004, 2005. And in the big picture type situation, modular homes oftentimes considered a better way of manufacturing homes than actually state-built on-site. A lot more quality control or checks and balances built into a modular home. It's built under controlled conditions, more efficient use of materials and what have you. So, you know, post Katrina, of course, we really got into understanding the difference between manufactured homes and modular homes. There is a distinct difference. Manufactured home is a home that meets HUD standards and has a HUD label on it, while a modular home meets the IBC code, meaning the International Building Code, of which all structures are required to be here in Pasagoula or anywhere else. So, you know, we've got a handful of modular homes that have been built in Pasagoula over the past few years. Recently, we've had questions regarding a home that was brought in. And it has a wind speed requirement and that, it meets wind speeds of 160 some odd miles per hour. It's a very well-built home. It has two-by-six construction on that street of walls. It's solid. However, it is very rectangular in appearance and may look more like a manufactured home than a modular home. We have zero standards in our UDC or Building Code that addresses the appearances of a single-family home, with the exception of square foot requirements. Certain codes require that be a minimum of 1,500 square feet, such as the SFR 10, and that can go down to, I think, 1,200 square feet. Typically, it's not an issue because most homes exceed the requirements of the code of the UDO for the area requirements. So, you know, our department has no real issue with modular homes. We don't regulate appearances of these homes. And I don't know that we want to regulate appearances of homes that are being built in the city. Keep in mind, we have incentives in place in which we try to encourage people to build homes. A particular home has a, the building permit cost associated with this was, I believe, about $180,000. So it is a, it should be considered an asset to our community. And we need more single-family homes in our city. I just believe it's a waterfront lot and it's not exactly what people were envisioning for that piece of property.
Working, being in real estate and working with people, especially in the boroughs of Biloxi, I know, if I'm not mistaken, every one of our new construction projects has to be rolled before the planning commissioner has also looked at aesthetics and maybe architectural appeal for the neighborhood.
Have you ever approached a design review committee, which is what they do with commercial projects? And yet, that is...
I've been working most with somebody who's building a house in Biloxi right now and they did have to submit their plans for review for aesthetics too.
Well, I mean, if... It's not impossible. I mean, some cities may have design requirements for single-family homes. I'm not aware of, if Biloxi has design standards for every single-family home that's built in that city, that's a...
Well, maybe not every single home, but in certain areas, maybe R1As for like a... I don't know, miserable.
I'll be happy to reach out to Ed or Jerry and see, you know, what their standards are over there. But, you know, you just, I mean, historic districts definitely have those areas that there could be some special areas that they're looking at. But, you know...
And by all means, we don't want to deter people from building, but we also want, you know, properties to be conducive with the neighborhood too, I guess.
I agree 100%. And typically, the value of a lot goes a long way in regulating what being built there. Nobody's going to buy a $500,000 lot and put a structure up that is not in some way, you know, relative to that cost. You know, typically, a house is going to cost three or four times more than the lot. This is just a unique situation. And I don't know that we should modify our rules or look at layering more, red tape or review processes onto a single-family residential because of, you know, somebody with this direction.
I don't mean to short-circuit anybody that has questions for Mr. Scruggs, but I think the council might be interested in is simply a quick telephone survey from someone in your office that could call other municipalities on the Gulf Coast. If I may, I might even suggest perhaps even more upscale communities, county or two over, like Fairhope. I'm curious as to whether or not this, the type of regulation that you say exists in Biloxi or may exist in some form or fashion, whether that exists and if so, is it commonplace? What you're talking about, and I'm the attorney for shell-landing development over in Goshen, there's all sorts of aesthetics and requirements that are built into covenants on the properties of the lots that are part of that subdivision that every owner has to follow. If this is something that's commonplace, I guess the lawyer in view is coming out and wondering, okay, well, how do we regulate which houses are subject to this? Which areas are subject to it? And if so, how do you avoid, you know, what looks good to you, maybe doesn't look good to me and I might not like it and making those basic decisions? And so I'd like to know a little bit more. If anybody else, please chime in if there's something...
You mentioned shell-landing. Shell-landing, there are different areas where different products can, I guess, emphasis is allowed as opposed to other streets, I know.
No, I mean, there's, there is, there's one set of architectural guidelines for shell-landing. Now, if someone has done something on another street, that may be because that particular committee on the fly has done something that says, look, on shell-landing Boulevard, we're going to do 1, 2, 3, 4. It's not built into the actual guidelines themselves. The guidelines treat, and it's called Phase 1, they treat it as a single, you know, entity unit, whatever you want to call it, for review purposes. There are options in that particular subdivision if you subdivided it into neighborhoods. And there are no neighborhoods, but you could subdivide it into neighborhoods and have a different standard for that neighborhood. Yes, that's possible.
I just think if you have a street with 500 to 750,000 dollar homes, you don't lock down any, a home that doesn't meet those same standards. We've got, and I don't know that where this particular home is, it's a subdivision that you have covenants.
Yeah. The...
But all the other homeowners who've lived there for years and have invested in their homes already, this is not. And homeowners who have recently built homes, what has happened to their investment? And I realize our UDO and, I mean, we don't have anything that regulates it, but how do we keep this from happening again? And I like a, I'm definitely more, and how come, you know, we have a planning permission while we appoint somebody, while we all appoint people and have somebody who reviews these things?
Well, I'd like to know, I mean, exactly, we're, for me, we're talking in abstract. I don't know what any city does. I mean, you mentioned Biloxi. If this is something that's common, fine, let's take a look at it and see. If it's not common, then I think we have to address the threshold question of, is this something we want to get into the business of doing? Regulating, you know, a person's particular house as far as what it can do that otherwise complies with the code. And as I mentioned, you always run a risk of, you know, what looks good may, may not look good to you and vice versa. And now you're essentially picking a side based upon, you know, some criteria that didn't exist before and may not have existed at the time that these people purchased the land. So I'm just, I'm looking for more information right now.
Agree, but it kind of gets to our metal buildings with a nice facade on the outside kind of scenario. I agree, we need to look into it more when you come back with some better information and go from there. But I think that's where it all goes back to in my mind. Fine. We have a, the largest home that I think of always is on Beach Boulevard. I can't tell if it's a modular home.
There is one on Beach Boulevard, yes.
Yeah, I know. But I wouldn't have known that unless they told me. I can think of several in the Pine Crest area that are modular homes. But I would not have known unless they had told me. So...
Donovan, would it be enough time for your department to come back in 30 days with at least some sort of either written or verbal report on what other cities along the Mississippi Gulf Coast have done and perhaps even looking into coastal Alabama as far as this issue of modular homes that may be, in this particular instance, on waterfront property? How, are they regulated just as any other structure would be in that particular zoning classification? Or are there certain special criteria based on a given area within that city? I mean, does that make sense to you?
Well, you threw in a much more, you said, we use it waterfront. You made waterfront lots or you mean waterfront communities? I mean, because, you know, you talk about waterfront lots and of course, you're paying for much newer review.
If I was just a much restricted area, is there R1As or travel highs?
Yeah.
I think that, I think that helps. Okay. All right. Is that something that 30 days would be sufficient?
No, it'd be more than that, yes.
Okay. Is that satisfactory to the council? Okay. So we'll put you on the agenda for first meeting on February. All right, okay. All right. Next item is 8F, Pasagoula Sportsplex Joint Meeting, Michael.
Yes, sir. As a part of moving forward on the ball field project, we will need to set up a joint meeting with the Recreation Commission and City Council. We will also have the engineer president there as well to give us updates on the project. I have a few dates already. I reached out to the Recreation Commission and January 20th and January 22nd, most folks from the Rec Commission will be available. I also have three other dates if the 20th and 22nd do not work. At 6:00 P.M.
My personal preference would be the 22nd, but I could make myself available on the 20th.
Well, I will get back to the engineer then. If the 22nd works on him and that, he can come to that joint meeting and I'll notify the Rec Commission members as well.
All right. Thank you. Moving on now to the docket of claims. Does any member of the council have a question for the staff regarding an item on the docket? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the docket of claims? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? On the mayor council item, Scott, I didn't realize this. You, they updated the agenda on mine. You, this is listed under your Ward 5. Is it, is that something you requested? Okay. The State of the City Address is normally given by the mayor in January. And obviously, we do not have a mayor right now. I may wear the hat, but I do not hold the office. So a suggestion was made about whether I should give a State of the City Address. Quite frankly, I backed off merely because we are having a special election. We will have a mayor, knock on wood, hopefully sometime around the middle of February. If, but I'm open either way. Sometimes it's been traditional for someone on behalf of the city to give such an address to summarize not only where we've been, but where we're going. But I certainly have no problem. I don't think it's a big deal to wait for a month to do that. I think that gives a great opportunity for whoever's elected to get out in front and certainly might force him or her to get a little educated about, Donovan, where we've been, but where we're going. So having said that, does the council have any consensus? Is all right, we're just delaying the State of the City Address until after the mayoral election?
All right. Earl, I have prepared my speech.
Louie's volunteering.
I'm ready.
Can someone put that in a motion, please? I appreciate you volunteering, Willie. All right. Okay. There be no further items on the open agenda. Is there a motion to go into a closed session to determine whether or not executive session is needed? Any further discussion? Before we vote on that, is there anybody who signed up on the list?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry, Laura, come on up.
I'm not sure if it's a little aggressive because it's, apart from it's about what you want to get into to accept the session now, but I'll go ahead and speak now.
Sure.
I'll hold my peace. I've been contacted by several people today. I don't know why they choose me, but they do. And part of it may be because they know I'm willing to get up here and speak. But there are quite a few people that are very concerned about the consulting resolution to hire Mr. Quarterback as a consultant for the city. I myself am concerned about that. He resigned on December 6th and effective December 31st. Not much has changed about our circumstances since that time. We had already decided to hire Mr. Silverman back on November 19th. So we were well aware of what was going to be coming along. So I seen a need to hire him back when he could have resigned effective... So, I seen the need to hire him back when he could have resigned effective to sail longer to accomplish the goal that the consulting job would offer. There are, there are other reasons that are out there that I hope have been emailed to you today. I've encouraged everybody that I've come in contact with to reach out to you themselves by email or phone call. I know that I personally did that with both my representatives. I feel pretty sure Mr. Burrow has heard from at least one person. But I get a little frustrated, as I'm sure that you all do, that people are willing to say a lot of things online, but they're not willing to confront any of you by coming up here and speaking or either writing to you. So, I wanted to make sure the bases were covered. I just don't think it's a good idea. I definitely don't think it needs to be open-ended and I definitely don't think it needs to be twenty-five hundred a month. And that's pretty much covers all the niceties that I could say about it. So I appreciate you letting me have a moment of your time to, to speak tonight and I wish you good luck in settling that.
Laura, as always, I do appreciate you coming up and speaking.
You're welcome.
Alright. Is there anyone else on, Laura, was there anyone else on the list?
No, sir, I'm here.
Okay, alright, thanks. All those in favor of going into a closed session to determine whether an executive session is needed, uh, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Alright. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Appreciate, uh, you being here on the new year, the first meeting of our new city manager. And we look forward to bigger, brighter things for twenty-twenty. Thank you.